As you see, the neighbor to the right here has duplex in the front. It's a duplex in the rear. Um, this would complement the neighborhood, in my opinion. Have it rezoned a D R two F. I received letters of support from several neighbors as well as the West Side Neighborhood itself. I went and talked to them and they gave me their good graces. They're just excited to see something built back here. If you're looking to the left down F Street, I can count one, two, three, four. Four abandoned homes right there. Most of F Street is either abandoned or vacant lawately. And the neighborhood was just excited to see some growth along this corridor. And what we also thought was cool is we would try to incorporate our development plans into the future Low Country Low Line that should be going in directly behind. And that would increase, you know, mass transit, bike transportation. We would all two off parking spots for each. And we think that this would be a great project for the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to cut you off. Are you finished?
Uh, do you all have any questions for me regarding rezon?
I don't know that we do right now, but um, if we do, we'll come to you. Is anything else you want to add?
No, I just hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, since there's no one signed up to speak in favor or opposed, uh, we'll close the public hearing aspect of this. And I'll ask any commission members if they have questions, comments or motions.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Ms. Lepasus moves for approval. I'm sorry. Is there further discussion in a second?
I'll second that, Charlie. This is Harry.
Great, uh, Mr. Lussain seconds the motion. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, there's a motion to approve this application by Ms. Lepasus, second by Mr. Lussain. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is she with us?
She is.
She is on mute.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Great, uh, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Lussain?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Aye, in favor.
And I'm in favor. Ms. Harrison, are you with us now? Uh, uh? I don't hear, but, but that's, uh,
Still muted.
Okay.
She is and she's on mute.
Erica can unmute. You don't know what she can do, okay.
Okay, uh, well, there's seven.
Give us a thumbs up.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Give him a thumbs up.
Did you give us a thumbs up?
Yes, she is.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna assume that's a positive, so there's eight in favor and none opposed. Uh, thank you. Number two under rezonings is five seventy-eight Meeting Street, East Side Peninsula, TMS number four, five, nine, oh, one, oh, three, oh, three, one. Two point one, three acres request zoning from General Business, G B and Light Industrial, L I to mixed-use workforce housing, M U one W H, and to rezone a portion of TMS number four, five, nine, oh, one, oh, three, oh, three, one. Approximately one point two, five acres from Old City Height District two point five dash three, classification to Old City District three point five classification. Mr. Morgan?
Okay, this is the, uh, former Regis Milk Company, uh, that closed a number of years ago, five, six years ago, maybe longer, uh, in this oper- from its operation here on Meeting Street. Uh, nearby neighbors include a church to the north that was built about ten or fifteen years ago. The Grant Homes, which is affordable housing owned by the Charleston Housing Authority, a new mixed-use, uh, multifamily and retail facility here. Um, and a little bit further down the street is the one eighty place. And to the south is, um, uh, affordable housing owned by the Charleston Housing Authority. Also, to the rear is more affordable housing owned by the Charleston Housing Authority. And then, uh, a large lot owned by Charleston Water System that holds a very large store water storage tank. Um, the property was split zone for many years ago. Not exactly sure why it had G B zoning along Meeting Street because the whole property was used industrially, but that is the way the zoning was. Um, and then it also had two designations for its height. It had a five-story district here at the front and then a two and a half to, um, uh, uh, three-story designation to the rear. Um, the applicant is interested in changing to the M U one workforce housing district, which would be, um, uh, it has the allowance of unlimited density only held in by the heights and the overall site plan on the property. Um, of course, the M U one links with limited business, so that means that they are not looking to have any businesses that would be open from, uh, beyond seven A M. to eleven P M. So that's good for kind of neighborhood friendliness. Um, and then they would, uh, seek to change their height district from the two and a half, three district to the three and a half classification back in this area here. Um, I'm gonna show you some more images of the property. Uh, of course, this shows in our urban core in our current comprehensive plan. That is the area for the densest, uh, designations and the larger building footprints. Um, here is the property with a pure aerial and you see a lot of it is asphalt. Almost the entire site at present is in pervious service. You see the very large water tank here to the east, uh, the church to the north, um, and the construction site that now is the large mixed-use project directly across the street. Um, here is an oblique image. Again, there is also another church, I neglected to, to mention, that is in the southeast corner of the property. And here are some images from Meeting Street. You can see the industrial nature of a lot of the buildings and from Stewart Street. And, uh, from the back, fronting on Nassau and from Stewart and, um, Nassau here. Looking in the distance, there's the large water tower, which is forty, fifty feet tall here. There's also a new, uh, five-story office building, the Addison Building that fronts on, uh, U G Street in this location. Um, so, um, let me back up here. So we have, um, all of this info here for you. Um, the, um, density again is in line with what would be in the urban core. And the heights, we think, are appropriate, given that the front for facing height is a five-story district. And, uh, the rear, um, is, uh, impacted by this large water tower that's over in this area and then greater heights that are fronting to the north, uh, with five stories there. So it's kind of surrounded on several sides by either taller structures or greater height allowances. Um, this also relates to a ordinance amendment that we're going to discuss tonight for the Old City Height District in reference to the two and a half, three-story district. Um, but they have put in their request to go up to the three and a half district for that rear portion of the site. And of course, any new development on the site would also be reviewed by the Board of Architectural Review. I also neglected to point out that this site is a very appropriate place for mixed use and, and multifamily development because it is on the future Low Country Rapid Transit Line, um, Bus Rapid Transit Line that will be coming down Meeting Street and in fact, will have a stop in the Meeting and U G Street area. So very appropriate location for density. With all that information, uh, staffs recommending approval, uh, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Uh, the folks from, um, from, um, Thomason Hutton with us, Chloe?
Yes, and I've just promoted them to panelists. Um, Tony, Jimmy and Lynn, if you could please share your videos and, um, feel free to go ahead and start whenever you are unmuted.
You folks go ahead whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, I'll start. Um, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, uh, for, for hearing the presentation tonight. My name is Tony Woody. I'm a civil engineer with Thomason Hutton Engineering Company, six eighty-two Johnny Dodds Boulevard in Mount Pleasant. Um, with me tonight is, um, um, Lynn Meyer, who's representing the, um, the, the buyer for the property and the developer and, um, also Jimmy Walker, who is, uh, who will be working on the architecture for the project. Um, we, uh, we appreciate the city working with us. We've been, uh, working with them for the past few months. We've been through the sketch plan Wednesday, uh, presented a, a building, got some comments and, um, have made some adjustments accordingly. And, um, the, uh, the project is generally, uh, gonna be about two hundred and ten, um, multifamily units and approximately five thousand square feet of small shop retail. Um, and with that, we will be happy to answer any questions, uh, you or the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. It's good to see you. We hadn't seen you in a while.
Yes, sir. It's, it's good to be back or at least seen.
Great, that's great. Good to see. Um, so Chloe, I think we have on this, uh, only a, is any, I, I don't see anyone opposed or in favor, but I think there's a comment. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, from Cashin Drolle. I'm going to give her permission to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, Cashin, you should be able to.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Great, Cashin Drolle with Historic Charleston Foundation. Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I did not begin my remarks by giving, um, recognition to my friend and neighbor Commissioner Donna Jacobs, who was recognized by City Council last night with the twenty twenty-one Robert Ballard Award for all of her fantastic volunteer contributions, which, um, are many to the city. So she, um, she got amazing accolades from City Council last night. So I thought she deserved, um, some accolades, uh, from the Planning Commission as well. And I didn't mean to embarrass her, but I thought she deserved a shout out.
Great, thank you. Would you, anything else you want to add? But I agree with you, Ms. Jacobs.
Well, I didn't sign up. I didn't sign up to speak about her, but I just, I wanted to add that. Um, but I do have some comments about five seventy-eight Meeting Street. Um, we are energized by the possibility of a redevelopment at the Regis Milk Site. Um, we did first learn about that the site was being proposed for redevelopment when city staff came to us with the need to adjust, to address a provision in the Old City Height District zoning code, which is, um, actually on the agenda for discussion later this evening. Um, H C F is supportive of the rezoning request, request from General Business and Light Industrial to mixed-use workforce housing, both because M U W H is a less intensive use, but also because the rezoning will contribute, uh, hopefully to the availability of workforce housing stock on the peninsula. However, with regards to the request for increased height from District two and a half, three to District three and a half, um, on the rear portion of the property, we'd like some more information to feel comfortable with this rezoning request. The rear portion of, the rear portion of the property does back up to the water tower, but it also backs up to, um, Charleston Housing Authority complexes that are one and two stories and two churches and not knowing details or intentions for the project. And since the three and a half height district can mean four stories for architectural merit, we do have concerns about scaling to the housing. We have concerns about precedent, the precedent that this could set. And, um, respectfully, H C F requests a deferral to allow the public to learn a little more about this proposal before the rezoning moves forward.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Drolle. Um, there's no one else to sign up to speak or any comments on this. Mr. Woody or Mr. Morgan, would you like to, uh, comment? Or Mr. Woody, would you like to comment on, on the concern or clarify anything?
Um, well, thank you, yes. Um, so, um, we are asking for an increased height to the, uh, Height District three point five. And, um, I mean, that, that is, uh, I mean, it's a three and a half foot height district. Doesn't mean you get a, you know, um, a floor that's only six feet tall. It basically means that the, the, uh, the additional floors pulled back from the edge of the building. So what we're asking for should not overwhelm, uh, the, uh, the buildings to the rear. We've also been through this with the city staff and as Christopher Morgan said, they are supportive. The only way that we get the extra half story is if, is through architectural merit. So in other words, it would be, uh, a building that is over and above, uh, what would typically be built in order to get the extra half floor. And even with that, it goes through the B A R, which is also open to the public and available for comment. And, um, and so the, the comments about the height and what, and its appropriateness can be made at that point. Um, so we would, um, we would like to, um, to move forward with the city's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Uh, Chris, would you like to add anything on this, Mr. Morgan?
Um, I guess I would, um, point out a couple of things. Um, first off, you know, if you look at the context of this property and where the height change is. So the entire location, I hope you all can see my cursor, but the entire location on the north side of Stewart Street backs up to a height district that is a five-story height district here. So on this side, there's a five-story height district. The entire chain area here, of course, fronting on Meeting Street is a five-story height district. You have in this area here, fronting on this whole portion of Nassau Street, essentially, a four to five-story, uh, large water tank that's underneath here. Um, and then the lower scale one and two-story buildings start over here, but they're more across from the church. And the church is adjacent here. And I believe that Mr. Woody had had discussions and his team had had discussions with this church and had a degree of support from this church because they're the most directly impacted here. But we feel like with the context of the surrounding area and the character of the surrounding area, that this change is in keeping with what would be there and what could be there in the future.
Great. Thank you, Chris, for clarifying that. Thank you, Mr. Woody. Um, that'll close the public aspect of this and ask if there's any questions of, from commission members or, uh, motions or need any clarification. You know, this is an interesting piece of property. Anybody's been to Charleston for a while, it's like a hit part of history, I think, around here. So I appreciate it. Commission members, any questions, comments or motions?
Mr. Bailey has his hand raised.
Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
Just a, uh, clarification. I think Christopher just answered most of it, but, um, the front portion on Meeting Street, that's five-story now and remains five-story, correct?
Correct.
And the back portion is going from how many stories to the three point five?
Current district is called two and a half slash three. So two and a half or three stories in the rear and the request is to go to three and a half. So essentially a half-story, uh, increase request.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or motions from commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead. And, and Ms. Jacobs, I want to say before you start, I heard the, the comment earlier from Ms. Drolle and, uh, and I agree with her. You're one of the hardest-working neighborhood people and, uh, and, uh, commission members I know. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Now you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Um, also clarification, it was said that the review would go through the B A R on the design of this building. Is that my understanding too?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Right, because I went out there to look at it because just looking at it visually in the packet, it, it looked like a no-brainer. But when I got out there, there is a lot of low-profile like churches and housing around it, even though they're in properties that are currently zoned for height. And then it made me a little nervous, but it sounds like to me that if you're already five stories in the front, um, and it's not a huge story change in the back. I mean, that water tower is there, but it's so far away. I'm gonna, you know, with hesitation and knowing that it's under B A R review, move for approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Any other comments? Or second by Mr. Bailey, so there's a motion. On Ms. Jacobs, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any other comments? And if not, we'll go to a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Great, thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Mr. Lussain?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Aye, in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor as well. So that's eight in favor and none opposed. Thank you all. And again, Mr. Woody, good to see you as well. Um, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which says ordinance amendments. Number one, amend chapter fifty-four of Dakota City of Charleston zoning ordinance by amending section fifteen of section fifty-four dash three oh six, Old City Height Districts, and the footnotes, the Old City Height District chart in section fifty-four dash three oh six X. Um, I think Mr. Batchelder is gonna present, is that, on that, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Karish. So, good evening, Board Member. I'm sorry. Good evening, uh, commission members. I, uh, wanted to speak briefly about this. So you just heard a rezoning for five seventy-eight Meeting Street to increase the height zone. And this, this ordinance is, uh, intended to amend language in the current regulations that would prohibit City Council from approving that increase in height at five seventy-eight Meeting Street. And it wasn't until we started talking to the, uh, applicants who were requesting that increase in height, uh, at five seventy-eight meeting, that we realized that there was this footnote at the very end of the Old City Height District regulations that basically says City Council can't approve an increase in the height. And that's footnote one at the end of that chart that is part of the ordinance. And you see it on the screen right now. So the primary purpose of this ordinance is to remove that language, uh, from this footnote. And when we looked at it a little bit more closely, we saw that there was a need to amend the language in footnote number two, just to make it clear that when you rezone a four twelve height district, you can only do that, um, if you're rezoning from the Upper Peninsula zoning district to another base zoning district. So that's, that's a technical issue. But when we presented this to the Historic Charleston Foundation and the Preservation Society to get their feedback, they said, well, you know, we really want some additional language in the ordinance to, um, address these requests for rezoning to a higher height district. So we've added this language in an attempt to provide you and the City Council with some guidance as to what should be considered when we do get these kinds of requests. So that, that is essentially the, uh, the purpose of the ordinance. We think that was a good suggestion. We agree with that and we incorporated that, uh, change into the ordinance. So we, we hope that you'll recommend approval of this ordinance so we can take it to City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Batchelder. I think, I think, um, Chloe, we have, uh, Mr. Drolle signed up to speak or is it just a written comment?
Yeah, she signed up to speak.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Hello again. Um, H C F is, I'm well. Thanks for having me again. H C F is very supportive of this ordinance amendment and we respectfully request the commission's approval of the ordinance this evening. Mr. Batchelder did a really nice job of explaining, um, it, and I'd like to thank him and Mr. Morgan, um, for reaching out to us for input on the proposed change. And, um, a- as Mr. Batchelder pointed out, I'd like to commend your attention to the language in section one, which we are particularly excited about, is it establishes evaluatory criteria for future height districts rezonings. And, and lastly, as part of the conversation that we all have with planning staff on the ordinance, we talked about addressing shortcomings in the definition of architectural merit in section fifty-fourth, uh, three oh six seventeen as well, which has been an ongoing issue at the Board of Architectural Review. Um, there are some interpretation issues that need to be addressed that'll assist both, um, B A R applicants and members. And we look forward to working on that with the commission and staff in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your organizations work on this as well and your suggestions. They're always helpful. Um, Chloe, I don't think we have anyone else, uh, signed up to speak or any written comments. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, no one else has signed up to speak, but we do have a written comment from, um, Erin Minnigan. The Preservation Society of Charleston. I'll read that now. Um, so Erin Minnigan, one four seven King Street, Preservation Society of Charleston, says that P S C would like to thank city staff for engaging us on this ordinance language change. We have long advocated for the need to put in place criteria for the Planning Commission to evaluate height district rezoning requests. We are supportive of the proposed new language incorporated under chapter fifty-four, three oh six, subsection fifteen, that establishes parameters for height district rezonings based on compatibility with surrounding character and context.
Great, thank you, ma'am. That'll conclude the, uh, public, uh, hearing part of this. And, uh, I'll ask any commission members if they have questions, comments or motions. No comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Great, Mr. Bailey, uh, I think Mr. Bailey moved to approve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, is that, oh, great, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other questions, comments?
I'll second the motion.
Great, Ms. Jacobs seconded the motion. If there's no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Great, thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye, in favor.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lussain?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Mr. Flue?
Aye, in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor as well. So that's, uh, eight in favor and none opposed. Next item on the agenda is, uh, ordinance amendment number two, to amend section fifty-four of Dakota City of Charleston zoning ordinance by changing part four accessory uses of Article two Land Use Regulations to add a new section, fifty-four dash two one four Outdoor Dining Services to authorize the use of new or additional space for outdoor dining services. Mr. Batchelder?
I'm gonna unmute myself, so thank you again. So the, uh, purpose of this ordinance is to give some relief to our food and beverage industry and take what we've been doing on an emergency basis since May, where we have allowed outdoor dining on private property and sidewalks, um, under certain circumstances. And, and if they satisfy certain conditions, they're allowed to do this. But those emergency ordinances only last for sixty days and they have to be renewed. And so to, uh, do this in a way that, um, justifies the, uh, the expense of investing in furniture and maybe outdoor improvements to these spaces, um, is an important consideration. And the sixty-day emergency ordinance provisions just simply don't give people that kind of confidence. So we thought we should do something on a more extended basis. Um, and so that's the purpose of this ordinance is to simply take those current rules that we have and extend them out through January tenth of twenty twenty-two, a full year and then some. And, uh, and give those businesses the opportunity to take advantage of these outdoor spaces if they have that capability and provide some additional, uh, space for dining. So that's the purpose of the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, the ordinance that we've got in effect right now under the emergency, uh, provisions, we've had about forty-one applicants go through our process and receive those permits. Um, most are sidewalk dining, some, I think fourteen of them are on private property. And I'm sure there probably will be a few more that come along in the coming year. Uh, but they've worked really well and, um, and, uh, we really haven't had complaints from, uh, other folks, neighborhoods or whatever uh, about these temporary situations. And I might just also, uh, add that Meg Thompson, who was, uh, in the meeting with us tonight, uh, can speak to the outreach that we've gone through to develop this ordinance and bring it to you.
Uh, sure, thank you, Lee.
Sure, thank you, Lee. Good evening, Planning Commission, first. As, as Director of Business and Neighborhood Services, I also have to echo my congratulations to Donna Jacobs on her very well-deserved award. But from my business services hat, we developed this ordinance over the summer when there were some restrictions on outdoor versus indoor dining. Currently, there are none for the state, however. Just because there are not restrictions does not mean that there are still people who are nervous about dining indoors. I count myself among them. This ordinance gives restaurants the opportunity to provide diners with an outdoor option to keep those patrons interested. Like we said, this has been really positive. This longer-term approach has gone to a group I staff, the Restaurant Advisory Group, that was formed during COVID to kind of look over these kinds of things. They are very supportive of giving them kind of a longer term. This anxiety about each sixty-day renewal was kind of getting to them. So the idea that they can have this for a little bit longer is comforting. And switching back to Neighborhood Services, I'll echo what Lee said. The response has been overwhelmingly positive, very little to no complaints. And, and generally thankful from, from neighborhoods to be able to keep supporting their neighborhood businesses. And with that, I'll turn it back over.
Great, thank you. Lee, anything else you want to add?
Only if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate y'all's work. I had a question about any complaints, and y'all answered that, so that's good to know. And it sounds like we're going to have to pick Ms. Jacobs out for dinner outside somewhere when we're through all this. But anyway. We, I think we have a couple of folks signed up to speak. Chloe, whenever you're ready.
Yes, we also have two Commissioners with their hands raised. Do you want to recognize them first, or do you want to go to the public hearing portion? Mr. Bailey has his hand raised.
Go ahead. Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, does, does this do exactly what we're doing now on a emergency basis? It just converts to the to the, I can't remember the date, next year or in two years?
Essentially, yes. And it also grandfathers everyone who's already received a permit. The one change is that going forward, it would prohibit this within a hundred and fifty feet of residential uses. Correctly?
That, that's true, but there is a, there is a provision in this ordinance that would allow somebody to pursue outdoor dining under this ordinance, even if it's within a hundred and fifty feet. And that means going through the Board of Zoning Appeals and receiving good approval for those kinds of situations.
But generally speaking, we're going to see the same type of outdoor use that we're seeing right now.
Correct.
That's all. Thank you.
Was there another? Great, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Was there another Commissioner?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
I just wanted to congratulate staff because this really is an exciting opportunity. Even in non-COVID time, it's fun to sit outside and eat, so I really applaud all the work. My question is, I've noticed a couple of places and restaurants that kind of have barricaded, I think along maybe Cannon Street, where they're actually out into parking spaces. Is that part of this ordinance or not?
It is not. That is a separate pilot program that I'm actually working on with the Traffic and Transportation Department. Those are called Parklets, where we're actually taking over parking spaces, and we're working with SCDOT on those. They, they have tons of requirements. For example, the, the types of barricades that we use, those orange jersey barriers that you'll see at Bob's on Cannon are one of their requirements. They require neighborhood buy-in. It is a separate process from what this ordinance would do.
Okay, so this is only with moving out onto a sidewalk in front of your establishment and maybe into a private lot that you have acquired next to it that might have been used for parking in, in the past or something of this nature. So those are the only things. My other question was, when I read through it, I got kind of caught up in all the encroachment language. You feel that the businesses are comfortable with how that language is because I was reading it going, oh my God, I'm lost. So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't too complicated for the actual restaurants to say, do I even qualify?
Sure. So when we first went through this, there were a lot of questions because they thought, you know, this is something that's supposed to make life easier. Why is it so very long? And basically, it's that we have to waive a lot of requirements. Basically, we had to say that this doesn't apply any longer, so it's all the language saying that that takes up space. When we put this out to the restaurants, we have a one-page online application, and we also did kind of, I think I got it down to a page and a half summary of, of the requirements.
Perfect. Okay. And is, what is the reasoning behind a sunset date, if we feel this is such an exciting opportunity?
So, that, that was our compromise with our legal staff. There's a feeling that we don't have enough data yet. So if we do get to a point where our foot traffic is back to normal on sidewalks, where people do need all of those parking spaces, we want to be able to, to switch back if needed.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Any other commission, questions, Commission members? And if not, we'll go to the people that want to speak. Chloe, you go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay. Councilmember Seekings?
Have you got me?
Yes.
Yeah, good to hear from you. I hope you're well.
Well, Mr. Chairman and fellow Councilman and members of the Planning Commission, first and foremost, let me thank you from the bottom of my heart and from the bottom of the heart of City Council. We don't get to come before you very often, and thank you for your service. It is unthankful, it's difficult, and in this time of COVID, I realize how difficult it can be. And so, thank you for your service to our city and to our citizens. You probably have the hardest job that we ask any citizen to do, and you do it with grace, so thank you so much. I say that not as a setup to ask you to, to do something for me, but really to, to simply say thank you, and we don't do it enough. I, I would, I signed up to speak tonight to, to commend you as, as, as much as I can to adopt this ordinance and to send it back to City Council for ratification. I want to thank Meg Thompson for all her hard work on this and many other initiatives during the, during the pandemic and during our shutdown that have really helped businesses that have struggled. As you all know, we are a tourist destination, and we are partners with the tourist business and the, and the hospitality industry. We have the ability to geofence King Street, and if you look at the geofencing data from March, April, and May of the traffic on King Street as opposed to January and February, we literally went from a robust, busy city of thirty to forty thousand people a day on King Street to, on the lowest days, effectively zero. And, and that hit right at the heart of our hospitality industry. I mean, and, you know, if you look worldwide, what industry has been hit the hardest? It is hospitality. We are a hospitality city, and so you can just imagine, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know, you can just imagine the struggles that the industry has had. Of all the things that have happened during the COVID challenges, this ordinance that was built into our emergency ordinance has helped immeasurably. And if you have seen any of the very creative uses of this ordinance that the many people have taken advantage of it have done, it's been really fantastic. I can just tell you, as a council member in downtown at District Eight, I have heard exactly zero complaints, and I mean, hundreds, if not thousands, of compliments on the way that the industry has rallied around this and done it in a responsible way. So I commend this to you in response to Commissioner Jacobs, who, by the way, congratulations again. I got my two cents in last night, and I'll leave that alone, but congratulations. I, I agree with you on the sunset provision on this, and I predict with some certainty that we will be back to you again asking for an extension, if not to take out any limitation or sunset in this ordinance. But I learned a long time ago that the enemy of good is better. So for now, I would ask that you pass this ordinance and send it back to us for ratification as it's presented, recognizing this as an opportunity in our zoning code to be partners with a very important industry and with a responsible group of business owners who have really been hit by the pandemic. So I have been honored to be a part of the Friday after, we call it the Friday Afternoon King Street Group, where we meet every Friday afternoon, and I can tell you, Meg runs those meetings, and that group, I think, is wildly in favor of this as well. So unless you have any questions of me, I will look forward to my next City Council meeting, where we take this up and give it first reading. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seekings. And thank you, Mr. Seekings, and thank you for your long and hard work for our city as well. We appreciate you as well. I think Ms. Rolle has signed up to speak as well. Is that correct?
Yes. Cashin, your microphone's been enabled.
Thank you. Good evening, Cashin Rolle with Historic Charleston Foundation again. HCF is really excited to see this provision for outdoor dining space move from emergency COVID-nineteen-related ordinances to the zoning code to give it a little bit of permanency, and we respectfully encourage you to approve the ordinance this evening. The emergency ordinance has been really good for the city in activating outdoor spaces. It's cleaned up the city a little bit. It's added life to sidewalks and parking lots. And residents, tourists, and restaurateurs have really enjoyed it, and it's improved visibility in the city. As y'all know, the ordinance before you tonight expires in January of twenty twenty-two, and we believe that some version of this ordinance needs to be made permanent. And HCF encourages the Commission to work with City Council, City staff, the Central Business District Improvement Commission, and other relevant boards and commissions to explore all the options so that outdoor dining doesn't expire in twenty twenty-two. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Rolle. I think that's everyone we have signed up to speak, so that'll close the public aspect of this. I, I, you know, I talked to a lot of restaurant folks, and they seem to be very excited. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, it's hurt them, but this has given them a little bit of relief, and I was so glad to hear, because I know originally, I think some neighborhood groups had concerns originally, and that seems to have worked out, and we don't hear the, any complaints, which is great. And I think everybody's doing what they're supposed to, so thank you. Comments, questions, or motions from Commission members?
A need for approval?
I'll second.
Ms. Lepasus? Moves for approval. Is that Ms. Johnson, I think, second? Great. Any other comments? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
I enthusiastically in favor.
Great, enthusiastically in favor. That, that's still one check. Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Great, thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, waiting for that dinner, Charlie, in favor.
Got it. Coming up. Ms. Johnson?
I am also enthusiastically in favor.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lepasus?
I also enthusiastically in favor.
Wow. Mr. Lasain?
Aye, ditto in favor.
Is that enthusiastically or just ditto?
Oh, that's very enthusiastically, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Mr. Flue?
I enthusiastically in favor.
Great, I'm going to be enthusiastically in favor too. So, it sounds like it's eight in favor and none opposed, so that, that'll pass and move on. The next item is ordinance amendment number three to amend chapter fifty-four of the Code City of Charleston zoning ordinance by changing part sixteen or one-six, cluster development of Article Two Land Use Regulations to add a new section fifty-four dash two ninety-nine point one-six, providing that cluster developments will no longer be permitted for new developments. Mr. Batchelder, I believe. Nope, Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm going to do this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a continued, you all had deferred this at your meeting last month, and it's back before you, and you had given us a number of questions and things like that that you wanted answered, and we're going to kind of go through those and hopefully get a lot of your questions answered. This is the actual ordinance that would have a sunset on this cluster zoning option. And of course, it was, it was given a first read by City Council, so it has pending ordinance at present, so you're not able to use these types of, or start a process with these types of developments at present in the city because of the pending ordinance that Council gave it in October. We have the information that you all requested. You'd asked for what has and has not worked with the existing cluster development ordinance. You asked for an overview of the proposed conservation ordinance intended to replace the existing cluster development ordinance. You asked what the interplay is between accessory dwelling unit provisions and the existing cluster development and reference conservation development ordinance and the ADU ordinance. You asked for the anticipated timeline for adopting the, the reference conservation ordinance. And you asked for the anticipated impact on developers during the period between the sunset and the cluster of the cluster development ordinance and the referenced conservation ordinance. So, just as background on this type of zoning, cluster, conservation, whatever you want to call it, this is what essentially it allows for, and this is a super simple drawing, but, but it gives you a good sense of, you know, on the left versus on the right, you have the same number of units, but you have a much more environmentally sensitive design. Purpose of a cluster development is to provide an alternative to traditional subdivision design requirements, and those are typically based on minimum lot standards. In most of the city, in our suburban areas, you typically have SR one, which is a nine thousand square foot lot. So the image on the left is very typical of nine thousand square foot lot subdivisions that we traditionally see in the city. And you have the stormwater facilities, things like that, you have the roads, and you still have the same access point essentially on the, the main collector there on the left. And on the right, you have what we view as, you know, a little bit more of a creative design that would meet, you know, the types of designs you see in a cluster ordinance, where you preserve more of the green space, you make the lots much smaller. It is true, but it allows for more of green space to be preserved. You saw a number of articles about this kind of well, not articles about this kind of thinking, but articles about the impact of loss of tree cover, things like that, in the Post and Courier this weekend, as a matter of fact. So, moving on, we are going to give you a little bit of background on the existing approved cluster developments. Not all of these have been built. There are twelve of them. I'm not going to list every single one of them, but on the right, you do see an image of, I believe it is the sea-air development that's on James Island. Some quick facts about all of these cluster developments, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have about these if you'd like to go in and get some more info. I don't have site plans for all these developments, but I'm happy to try to get some answers, questions, answers for you if you have them, questions. But the average size of these twelve developments is about twenty-two acres, so they aren't our biggest developments. The average number of units is about fifty-eight, so you end up with about two point six units per acre. That's a really important figure to see because SR one allows for four point eight, I believe it is, units an acre. And so, essentially, these are developing actually less densely than some of the existing zoning allows for. They, they also are found in areas of conservation zoning, which is a, I'm sorry, not conservation zoning, rural residential zoning, RR one, which is a three point five units an acre density. Again, two point six is less dense than that. The approximate open space that all these developments have preserved in the city by virtue of their site plans is about a hundred and forty acres. And again, those hundred and forty acres, in all likelihood, a good bit of it would have had, you know, larger lots subdivided across them. There are some wetlands in that area, but there still would have been some, some highland that would have turned into, to lots if the cluster ordinance had not been in place. Successes and areas for improvement. So we've seen the preservation of open spaces, I've just mentioned. We've seen how you can better preserve clusters of trees rather than just individual specimen trees, and how use of vegetation and natural features can enhance drainage systems. They help to mesh our suburban and rural areas to keep the rural areas looking a little bit more rural while you're still achieving some of those suburban types of densities. Areas of improvement, and this is after extensive staff analysis over the past eighteen months or so of the existing cluster developments. They have extraneous impervious surface, so we need to tighten down on how much impervious surface there is. They have varying levels of low-impact development practices, and integration of site features into stormwater management, into the stormwater management plan. They also have varying quality of the open space, so that needs some work. And they have an excess of new tree plantings versus conservation of pre-development clusters of trees. So, then we move on into other things you were looking for. Overview of the conservation ordinance. So this is the ordinance that we have designed that ultimately staff was working on as a replacement for the cluster ordinance. It would reduce the maximum impervious surface that was just cited before in the issues that staff has found with the current cluster ordinance. It requires low-impact development practices be used as stormwater designs. So it's an actual requirement, not just encouraging. It adds a pre-application site review meeting to identify conservation features and pre-development hydrology before designing the site layout and to assess appropriateness of the site for conservation design standards. So there's a whole So there's a whole lot more upfront that is required with this new conservation ordinance. It also enhances open space requirements and it enhances tree conservation requirements and adds provisions for affordable housing and accessory dwelling units. And that is an item that is super important, we think, from a staff standpoint because the city, as our work on our comprehensive plan is showing, as we will be showing in much more detail to you all when we got a report from our housing consultant, but the city is in a housing crisis. We are greatly deficient on affordable housing and accessory dwelling units are a huge proven, nationwide proven method of helping with affordable housing issues. Also having affordable housing provisions just in any new zoning ordinance as we create, we think is gonna be super critical as we move forward to try to get our city out of this housing crisis. Additional responses that you all had, what is the interplay between the ADU provisions and the existing cluster development and reference conservation development ordinance and ADU ordinance? So it's important to understand that ADUs are permitted in the current cluster ordinance without any affordability requirements. Now, to do an ADU in the rest of the city, you do have to have the, meet the affordability requirements. And the clusters, at present, you didn't have to. The anticipated timeframe for adopting the reference conservation ordinance and that moved to 2021 because we realized that we needed the data, the goals, the background from the comprehensive plan to help folks like the planning commission, like you all, and our council, understand the important need for this conservation ordinance. All the data that's gonna be in this comprehensive plan, so we want to get that to everybody first before really moving forward with the conservation ordinance. And then the anticipated impact on developers during the period between the sunset of the cluster development ordinance and the reference conservation ordinance. We do have some developers that have wanted to start the approval process for cluster development and they are having to wait for the new ordinance to be ratified. That would be the effect of the sunset laws on the current cluster ordinance. All the other developments that already have their approvals could move forward over time, but new ones that are coming in, we had no of at least two that were starting a process in the last few months that have gotten kind of shut down on this, so. And I think overall, you know, from a staff standpoint, this is something that is coming from our city council, so we have presented it to you all as, you know, what the city council has, has moved forward and asked you all for your opinions on, and then you all gave us a lot of questions at the last meeting that I hope I've answered, but I'm happy to spend more time answering any other questions you all may have, and other folks on our staff would be happy to help as well.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Why don't we hear from the people that have, that signed up to speak? And then we'll take questions from commission members. Chloe, I see we have Ms. Jackson as well as Councilmember Jackson and Seekings as, as well as Josh, Josh Dick signed up. You go ahead whenever you're ready.
Actually, Councilmember Jackson did not sign up to speak. That was my error and Councilmember Seekings did sign up to speak and his microphone has been enabled.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Seekings, whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will be brief, and thank you for allowing me not once but twice to speak to you all. It's a rare treat. So the, the one thing about this ordinance that I would change immediately and would vote to change is the name. I think it's unfortunate. I just think it gives it really a, a bad taste. It is an attempt at conservation and as Mr. Morgan pointed out, there are some adjustments that need to be made to it. As I listened to his presentation and if I came to this cold, I would have thought that he was in front of you tonight speaking in favor of us adopting this ordinance, not abandoning it and completely eradicating it from the city code, which I would ask that you do not do tonight. I think this is something that should be done in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, done in conjunction with a conservation ordinance and merged, but to simply abandon a, a piece of our legislation and wait some period of time going forward, I think is kind of inconsistent with where we are. This did, I've, and Mr. Karish reminded me and it made me sit a little lower in my seat that I've been doing this now for a while. I'm now beginning my twelfth year on council. This, this did come to you from council and I think it's probably odd, you've got a council member sitting here asking you to sort of put the brakes on this for a second. But it came in a, in a different configuration. It came through the community development committee, did not come from city council as a whole and then was reported out. So we, as the applicant, the city, we haven't had a public hearing or an opportunity from the public to be heard on this because we don't allow public comment at our city council committee meetings, as you know. And as an applicant, I think really it's incumbent on us to put this out there and get some comment back from the public. I will point out that this ordinance, as it stands, is really an ordinance that is the only one we've got out there. If you're gonna build something like Mr. Morgan showed you as opposed to your typical nineteen fifties-looking suburban square development, something that is thoughtful and is consistent with, one of the things we've worked on so hard and that's water management. And, and that, thank you, Christopher. I mean, if you look at that, while the lots are smaller, the, the actual amount of public and accessible space and usable space for things like water management and conservation is much greater. And ultimately, I hope through, through our comprehensive plan and through and, and some amendments and adjustments to what I hope we will call a conservation, not a cluster ordinance, we'll be able to get there. But to, to go dark on this and just simply eradicate this, I would, I would ask that you sort of put the brakes on that and, and let us do our job as applicant on the front end. Put this out there, notice it. I, I know that this affects and is eligible in a number of zoning categories, SR one, SR seven, RR one, conservation. Who knows how many properties this actually affects, but we probably need to get it out to them and, and get some input. So I know that you all had some concerns and some questions at your last meeting. I, I would ask that you, again, voice those concerns and send it, send this back to city council to sort of start all over again, consistent with what Mr. Morgan has, has told you, and I think is consistent with what Mr. Lindsay was doing before he left. And that is to come up and, and make this ordinance better, but not abandon it. And we'll just simply be shutting down some projects that are out there and, you know, that comes with its own set of issues for us as a council and for y'all as the planning commission too. So I probably said, well, I want to, but for the reasons stated, I would, I would ask that you, you think about this, you send it back for us to sort of start all over again. And I did think, I do think someone mentioned the article this weekend by Tony Bartelmay in the paper. It was really fascinating to me about the number of trees. If you look at the conventional subdivision design versus what Mr. Morgan has shown you as a conservation subdivision design today that will be allowable under this cluster ordinance, that's exactly what Mr. Bartelmay and his team are encouraging us to do for conservation water management purposes, among other things, and not what you see to the left, which is what you, we're gonna get if we just completely abandon this ordinance. So again, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I will look forward to going back to work, voting in favor of the outdoor dining ordinance and going back to work and starting all over again, along with our planning department, on coming back to you with a conservation ordinance that is consistent with our comprehensive plan as it gets presented. I do want to very quickly mention one other thing before I put myself back on mute and go away from your lives for a while. I mean, that is, on the last thing, I know that Councilmember Mill Chappell was actually online and didn't sign up to speak, but she wanted to commend to you what you've already done and that is pass the outdoor dining ordinance. So with that, unless you have any questions for me, Mr. Chairman, and fellow council members, I wish you happy holidays. Happy voting tonight. I look forward to working with you in the year 2021. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Seekings, as always. I think Mr. Dix has signed up to speak as well. Is that right, Chloe?
Correct, yes. Okay. Josh, your microphone has been enabled. Whenever you're ready.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all giving me a few minutes and again, taking another look at this, you know, the presentation that Mr. Morgan gave, you know, we, we couldn't have done a better job. You know, the, the cluster development, it does have some flaws and, and there's our things that we need to work out, but it is a good design practice and something that we shouldn't necessarily just throw out because, you know, it, it, it doesn't work in a few areas. Our recommendation would be that i- if we do want to sunset this provision, have it be in concert with the conservation design ordinance that hopefully will come online sometime in, in 2021 during the summer. You know, it, it's not perfect, but it is a great asset when it comes to design and we hope that y'all can allow us to, to continue to refine it and make it better so that we can continue to grow in a, in a productive way. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to ask or answer any questions and look forward to hearing how y'all discuss the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dix. I gotta close the public aspect of this. I don't think anyone else has signed up to speak or no written comments that I know of. Is that correct, Chloe?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So that'll close the public aspect of this. You know, I, I, I appreciate Councilmember Seekings and Mr. Dix's comments as well as Mr. Morgan's presentations and answers. You know, I've looked at this and I had a chance to talk to a couple of commission members earlier and and I think there are a lot of positive things to this cluster ordinance. I know we got a lot of negatives based on the James Island issue. But anyway, I'll let other council members, excuse me, other commission members speak or comments or motions.
Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Um, first of all, this is kind of a procedural issue I need to understand. Council has given this a first reading, which is essentially, I hate to use this term, but put a moratorium, like nothing else can be considered at this time until we make a decision or not, or they make a decision or not. Is that correct? I mean, so no, no new cluster developments can be considered right now?
Correct.
Okay. And how long does that go on? Like if we just say we still aren't, we still wanted to defer this and talk further, how long does that sort of float, sit in existence?
That would be in effect until council removes the pending ordinance and, you know, votes it down.
So essentially, if we did nothing until we got a, a good conservation ordinance, nothing happens.
I'm sorry.
If we do nothing right now, I'm just trying to understand this. If we decide we're not ready to do anything and until we get a conservation ordinance, there still can be no consideration of new, brand-new cluster development applications at this time. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
I mean, council could choose, you know, if it's been with you all for a certain period of time, they could say, okay, well, they haven't given us a recommendation on it, they being the planning commission, so they could go ahead and, and act on further readings on that ordinance.
Okay.
Unless they haven't gotten a recommendation from you all.
Okay, okay. I just, it's just a little procedural thing that was a little confusing to me. If you could go back to that slide, Christopher, just to make sure I understand it, with the clustering, the different clusters, that one, the existent, the existing ones? The, the one after that one?
Oh, after, oh, the existing ones. Okay, I got you.
The existing one. So this is what's pending or existing currently, but it doesn't tell us everything that's been done, correct?
Well, no, this is every development that had approvals for a cluster development.
Ever period.
Not been completed. Some of these are complete.
Okay, so this is a complete list of asked-for, completed
That is correct.
and processed right now. Okay, so this, this is it. Okay.
And some of these may be marketed under different names than they were going through their approval process under, so the names may sound strange.
Okay. And then if we, if we, let's say we recommended scenario, if we recommended to approve this sunset without having any process of, of a conservation ordinance and council chose to proceed forward with that passage, then we essentially are left with nothing in the float, correct?
Right, nothing that allows this type of development in our, our code of ordinances.
Okay.
Somebody could do a PUD, somebody could go through the proper.
Okay, okay, but, but this, but this tool is just out of the toolkit without anything to properly replace it. Okay. I'm, I'm gonna hear from some other commissioners first. Thank you.
Ms. Lempasus is next.
Anyone else like, Ms. Lempasus, you go ahead.
Um, thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Mr. Seekings for, and Josh for your, your presentation. I don't know whether to start out by right now denying the, this ordinance amendment. I was not at the last meeting. I was recovering from some surgery and I was not able to get in on that discussion. I think that we are moving way too fast on an ordinance that we really took a lot of time to put together. The fact that this is already a pending ordinance and moved by city council for a first reading. This ordinance was done as an alternative. And I know that one of the challenges has been the by right of this being with an SR one, but if you look at that, that site plan that Christopher just put up with the normal subdivision, you've got a nine thousand square foot lot that is done with the cul-de-sacs and then you look to the right and you, I mean, it just forms an interesting design. It's not just block after block after block of lot after lot. It doesn't increase the density. We have had some challenges on the James Island one and the flood issues, and that has created the problem, in my opinion, for this cluster ordinance. To simply throw out this cluster ordinance is totally unacceptable to me. I think there's some flaws. I do agree that we could look at maybe the, this, the size of a cap on the size of the acreage and not have sixty-one acres, but maybe it could be a cap of twenty-five acres or twenty acres so that it makes it more of a, of the one on the conservation subdivision design. But, you know, there's a lot of, of opportunities that we can refine this ordinance, but we do not need to remove an ordinance so that, so that it does not have the ability to go forward. And if we do not, and if we defer tonight, then we have no opportunity. It's a pending ordinance and then we, they, it kind of leaves it in the, in the air. And I don't think the conservation ordinance, I think that we should take some components of that ordinance that to, to, and allow some of that language to be in our, a, a new cluster ordinance. But I am totally in, want to really make a motion to deny this amended ordinance. That's all I have to say. Somebody can comment.
Come, thank you, Ms. Lempasus. You know, it's kind of like the cluster becomes a bad word. We were talking earlier and that gathering place was a bad word and, and that got changed. I think that's what we were discussing earlier with you, that, that on the James Island issue and that, that got removed, but I think the cluster become a bad word and I don't think it needs to be. But go ahead, other commission members?
Mr. Lassane is next.
Lassane, you go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna turn my video off just to make sure that my audio is clear. I, I'm so grateful for Councilmember Seekings and comments as well as the presentation from the staff. This was my sense at the last meeting and, and I, you know, I, I think I was the one with the condition to be that a presentation be made about what the strengths and weaknesses have been as we've implemented this. Because I wasn't aware that, that there was any major problem with the ordinance that would merit us just throwing it out completely. And, and so, you know, for example, Christopher, you just jumped over the, go back to the one with the aerial view of sea-air. I mean, I'm familiar with this neighborhood. It's not far from where I live and it's beautifully done. I mean, it's a very nice neighborhood and it's attractive homes and, you know, nice families living in a beautiful part of James Island. And, and I think to take an example and, and if, Christopher, go back one slide, I mean, the, the, or go back two, I'm sorry, the one with the chart of all the existing, that, yeah, right there, I'm sorry. It's, it's one more back. The footnote on there about the
This one. Oh, I know where you're talking. Sorry.
The footnote on the description of
There we go.
Fleming Park Cluster Development. I mean, that is a, there is a problem with that development, but it is not related to the cluster ordinance. And so, you know, I just, I am grateful for, I, I wasn't aware of the, the specifics of how this got to us and I'm grateful for Councilmember Seekings to let us know that. But, you know, on the, on the merits of this ordinance, I think it's a mistake to throw this out when we don't have a suitable replacement. I'm, I'm all for fixing any issues that we have and I think these areas for improvement that are up here on this slide that we're looking at are, are quite valid and I'm, I'm eager to I'm eager to, for us to be at the point where we can do that. But I think to throw this out now is a mistake. And, and I think it's incumbent on us so that we don't have this pending ordinance that, that hangs around until the conservation ordinance gets passed. It's incumbent on us to go ahead, take a stand on this, send it to council, and they can either vote it up or down. And so I will second the motion that Ms. Lempasus made to deny the application. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lasain. Other comments, questions, commission members?
Ms. Harrison is next.
Ms. Harrison, you go ahead.
Thank you. I have to agree with, with Harry's comments. And also, I'm glad that we do have this, you know, compare and contrast in front of us. I think, and I, and I think my struggle with this is our ability to move forward and, you know, strongly advocate for denial of this ordinance, is how do we empower, I guess, you know, Christopher and planning staff to recognize the importance of this ordinance? How do, how as, how as a commission do we overcome the hurdle that is in front of us, which is the pre-ordinance doctrine? Because, you know, they are required to have a second and third reading, but at second and third reading, it may either happen or not happen. But in order, you know, for it to come to the table and, and a decision, you know, that is, that does not throw the baby out with the bathwater, how do we, how do we get past that, that hurdle? And I think that's, I guess that might be a question for you, Christopher, or just a question for the rest of the planning commissioners?
Christopher, you want to take that on? I think, if we, if we deny it, if the, if the wind says, the wind blows, and we say we want to deny this, I think the message ought to be the city council, that maybe we understand that the cluster needs some improvements, but we don't think you throw the whole thing out. But anyway, Christopher, you go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, you know, from a planning standpoint, we really feel like a tool like this is very, very important. We realize that there are flaws with the current ordinance, but we do have some successes with the current ordinance, and even the ones that have garnered the most public ire. The ire has been about things that weren't directly related to the way the conservation design was done, other than there are public comments about, you know, oh, the lots are so small, the houses are close together, that kind of thing. So, you know, it's different from conventional suburbia, particularly in the area where you've got, you know, mostly conventional suburbia. But, you know, I think there are some, some values to this. But I wish I could say that we were prepared and ready to go with the conservation ordinance, but because of the tremendous task of pulling the whole comprehensive plan together, and this huge importance in getting that data that we're pulling together for the comprehensive plan and helping to justify the new conservation ordinance, you know, we can't really say that we'd get that ready faster than getting the comprehensive plan together and recommending it via the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Other questions, comments of commission members?
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, you go ahead, sir.
Ms. Harrison expressed some of the same anxiety that I have, given the fact that it did come as a first reading. I think on a unanimous vote, that Councilmember Seekings' comments tonight allayed some of my concern. And I think we just have to have confidence that, you know, given Mr. Morgan's presentation, if it's anywhere similar to the one we've seen, I, I can't imagine someone arguing in favor of this right now. I mean, just in terms of the trade-offs, it just almost seems to be a no-brainer. I know there aren't no-brainers, but I, I just, I think we have to have confidence that city council is going to do the right thing, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments, questions?
Ms. Jacobs.
Ms. Jacobs, I've been waiting for you. You go ahead.
Back to me. I appreciate everything that everybody said, because it just sort of reaffirmed what I was concerned about from the beginning last month, when we, when I made a motion to defer, and then we all asked for these things to be clarified and educated and brought up to speed. Because anytime you do something for a while, you have successes and failures. And an ordinance like this is, we're looking at the entire city of Charleston. And if there have been successes in some places, we can't just throw out an ordinance because there was a failure in one place. And that, that made me nervous to, to throw out a citywide ordinance that, that, you know, that we could tweak and just make better, which I think that's what we're trying to do. And I would hate to, what I learned tonight is if we, you know, just sunset this thing and we're left with nothing, it, it may take us a while to put together an improved ordinance. But right now, we have an ordinance under which we can function, and then add the things that we learned from the comp plan. And I think there is enough pressure, I mean, we have two council people on the call, or maybe even three with Marie, that sort of are suggesting that we should, you know, be expeditious in this. And but we're going to learn from our comp plan and make a better ordinance. And I look forward also to doing that, and I'm going to support the motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak again.
Ms. Lempasus.
Thank you for your, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Ms. Lempasus has her hand raised.
Ms. Lempasus, you go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sunday, you with us?
Yeah, I am. Sorry. I just wanted to, to point out to what Mr. Morgan just said. I don't really think that the conservation, the new conservation ordinance has really anything to do with the cluster. I know that y'all are trying to swap one out for the other, or that was the recommendation. But whatever timeframe you do on that, I think that our cluster ordinance needs to stay in place, and we refine it. And then we work on that separately and not, and really, it really has no bearing, in my opinion, on the, on the new cluster ordinance. That's, and so I'd like to just put that out there so that all the other commission members know where I'm coming from on this.
Thank you, Ms. Lempasus. And again, I'm gonna reiterate, I think this, this whole cluster from the Central Park issue has gotten the bad stigma, I believe, in my mind, anyway. Other commission members, comments? If not, we'll do a, there's a motion by Ms. Lempasus, and I think seconded by Mr. Lasain.
Ms. Lasain has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Ms. Lasain, you go ahead.
Sorry, I don't want to belabor this. I just wanted to, to urge everyone that I think it's important that we give this an up or down vote tonight to, so council gets a very clear message from the planning commission about our approach to this. So I, I kind of feel where this is headed, so I'm gonna be quiet and let us take.
Thank you, Ms. Lasain. Good comment. If there's no other comments, we'll go to the vote. I believe there was a motion by Ms. Lempasus, a second by Mr. Lasain to deny this ordinance amendment. Mr. Bailey?
In favor.
Great, Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Lempasus?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Lasain?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Mr. Flue?
Aye, in favor.
Great, thank you. And I'm in favor as well. So that's eight in favor of denying this. And I, and hopefully, we can reach out to council members and let them know why we're denying this, that we don't want to throw the whole thing out, that we think it needs some work. But anyway, that, so this is eight, eight to deny, none against. Next on the agenda is zonings. So it's a subdivision request is deferred. Zonings number one, 2891 Doncaster, Hickory Hill, West Ashley, TMS number 3581000087, .31 acres, request re-zoning of single-family residential, SR1, so in single-family residential, R4 in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
And, Mr. Chairman, you pretty much gave the salient points of this case, brought into the city recently. It was R4 in Charleston County, and the surrounding stuff in the city is SR1. So that would be the most appropriate category.
Great. I don't think anyone signed up to speak on this. Have they, Chloe?
No, they haven't.
Great, thank you. So that'll close the public aspect. Are there questions of commission members or a motion?
Move for approval?
Great. Mr. Lasain, move for approval. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Great. Ms. Johnson, thank you. I'm gonna read the roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Lempasus?
Aye, in favor.
Great. Mr. Lasain?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Aye, in favor.
Great. And I'm in favor, so that's eight in favor and none opposed. The last item on the agenda is zonings number two, 333 Fleming Road, units C1 to dash 34 and D1 to dash D4, Cross Creek, James Island, TMS number 3430700113 dash 120, and a portion of 3430700193, .29 acres, request re-zoning, request zoning of diverse residential, DR1F. It was zone, single-family residential, R4, Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
And this is a kind of unusual one. This is off of Fleming Road, just south of Maybank Highway. It's just before Fleming Road starts to shift into a little bit more of a job center or industrial type of character. But this was a 32-unit townhouse development that was built probably 20, 30 years ago. And for whatever reason, the two unit, I mean, eight units in the back corner were not brought into the city at the time that developed. And new ownership took it over recently, and they realized the difference in the water bills and how complicated it was. I think it's all a rental development, and they wanted to bring it in the city, which they are in the process of doing. And the zoning that would be needed would match the rest of the complex, which is DR1F. And that is, you know, these are existing units, so we have recommended approval of that zoning.
Great, thank you. And I see no one signed up to speak, so that'll close the public aspect of this. Commission members, questions, comments, or motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Lasain, move for approval. Who's second? I'm sorry. Mr. Flue?
Jimmy.
No?
I think Jimmy did.
Oh, Mr. Bailey? Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. So moved by Mr. Lasain, seconded by Mr. Bailey. We'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Ms. Lempasus?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lasain?
Aye, in favor.
Great, and Mr. Flue?
Aye, in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor, so that's eight in favor and none against. So that zoning is now done. I think that concludes our agenda. I'd like to wish everyone a, I know we're all glad that we're winning now 2020, but I hope everyone has a very healthy and happy and safe Christmas and New Year and Hanukkah. So I appreciate all of y'all. Any comments?
Congratulations to Donna on your award. That's well, well deserved. And I can't, the only thing I can say about it is why did it take them so long?
Can we make a motion that, go ahead, can we make a motion that this is Donna Jacobs' Day at the commission? Actually, I'd like to make that motion. It's not official in the city, but from the planning commission, this is Donna Jacobs' Day.
Thank you. Thank you. Y'all are all being very kind. It's, it's been a very humbling process, you know. So, thank you.
Donna, it's been a pleasure to have you on this commission. I mean, I have seen a lot of members come and go, and what you have done to learn and read about all of the ordinances and go to every single solitary application that's on our agenda. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and how much, how delighted that I am that you are on this commission. So when I leave, I know that you're going to take over and be in great hands.
Wow, Sunday, that's, that's high praise. High praise. I thank you so much. Very gracious. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. I think everybody appreciates your work, but you're so involved in the neighborhoods in the city, so we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
And, and thank everybody for their work, and have a happy and healthy holiday.
Too.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Cheers. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas. Bye.
Night, everyone.